Everybody, I'd like to call the Monday, September 27th, 2021 School Board Meeting to Order. Lisa, can you please call the roll?
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Lala Birdie.
Here.
Inspector Arndt.
I believe he is coming.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Roche.
Here.
And Inspector Walker's absent chair Diaz.
Here.
That is I present.
Great.
At six o'clock.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you. First up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda from Monday, September 27th, 2021.
So moved.
As well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from September 13th and our September 20th work session minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion carries. All right. Our favorite part. Moving on to the quality and action and report section of our meeting. Our principals, woo-hoo, are here tonight to give us an update on how the start of the school year is going.
And we're going low to highs, so our youngest kids and their principals are going to start and we'll go up the chain.
Little to big. Thank you. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, School Board members. Thank you for having us. Mr. Breachley and I are going to do ours, take our celebrations together. So our celebrations encompass our goals of making sure that everyone feels welcomed, included, and has a personalized experience. And I do want to start off by, we talked today about celebrating our teachers. You know, as we've been going through classrooms and visiting and asking students what their most favorite thing of the school year so far is, hands down, it's been their teachers.
And lunch. I was reading in kindergarten classrooms today too, and I had, I'd asked in all the classrooms and yeah, they still love the playground, right? They still love lunch. They love being there. And so one of the gifts, I think, that the pandemic gave us as administrators too, was that we're out with families and kids more at arrival and dismissal than ever before. And to get a chance to actually talk to folks informally has been just so much information can come from that for one, but great relationship building too. So kids love being there. And you know, we're on day 14 or 15, I think, right now. And so we are in full kind of re-teaching and re-teaching expectations in our schools. So in both places. We're presenting today because I think that Lincoln and Capoja, just to start this year, are much more aligned than they've been in the past. And so we, when we started to share with each other what we're going to share, it was one, two, three, it was the same things, basically. And so building community at each school is super important right now. Building those relationships with staff and kids. We call our expectations the Capoja code. We have a kickoff. They do the same thing. I think we call it be responsible, be respectful, be safe. I think they call it be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. So look at that creativity, right? And so we're doing that in both places and will continue to do that because we know that it takes a while to create community. And that's what our staff is doing right now.
All right. So we're also, Terry talked about the capoja theme, about being someone to somebody. And Lincoln Center's is about being caring, kindness, and reflection. And so we're in the process of getting our implementation of BAR set up, starting with U-time, which is kind of the community building, teachers to get to know students really, really well by about a 30-minute activity a week. And then this next strategy is going to be like small block meetings. So grade levels talking about kids, talking about areas that they're successful in, areas of concern, whether it be academic or social emotional learning.
We also are working really hard, both intervention teams and support staff, on assessing our kids in literacy and math. And I think in both places, we're just about through the entire school. So part of getting to know them as kids is also part in getting to know them as students too. And so we just met today as administrative team and looked at our data. So we are ready to go. And it gives us great information about where our kids are at after 18 months in a pandemic. And so this will allow us to plan for small group instruction in the future.
And so I'm just going to add the guiding and building the personalized plan is based on these assessments. And so we have finished too at Lincoln Center. And what we're starting to do next is to have those grade level team meetings with our intervention teachers and look at each child individually to be able to put those plans together.
And I just have to say too, we started with just kids really liking to be back in school. You know, the number of kids signed up for safety patrol for one. And at Capoja is amazing. Travis Truler, who's our school counselor and advisor, has like 45 kids for school patrol, right? So they're craving power of some sort. They want a flag and they want a badge. K E C C O News we run, they are running a news program down there. We have so many kids interested in production. I know there's a Lala Birdie behind the scenes over at Lincoln Center, which is so cool. And even like Lego League numbers are way high. So I mean, kids are just excited to be back and they just want to do school. And it's really a lot of fun to start the year off that way, so.
Great.
So a lot of alignment between the two schools and a lot of excitement.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations on your enrollment.
Thank you very much.
And can I just say how lovely and refreshing it is to hear that you are working, you know, in tandem and sharing these, you know, what am I trying to say? You know, plans and the things that you guys are doing. And for many years, there was almost like a little competition between the elementary schools. So it's just awesome to hear that you guys are bringing that together.
Yeah. And these kids, they'll go, they'll be, their best friend at Lincoln might be at Capoja today.
Yeah.
And so similar, but not exact experiences, I think, is what we're looking for. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Hi, everyone. It's good to be here today. I'm going to go ahead.
Reintroduce yourself again.
Yep. So I'm Leah Borgan. I'm the principal at the middle school. I'm excited to be here today. We have a lot of good things going on in the middle school. And I was telling Dr. Webb, I try to get into every classroom every day. And I reach my goal about three times a week. So it's a, it's a good goal to have, but I'm so glad to be able to see students in school and students learning. Today, when I was in a language arts classroom, I saw a student take out a map that they made in social studies and kind of show it off. They were really proud of it. It was Biomes of Minnesota. Our seventh graders have been planting in the community garden outside Central Square. And they've been planting plants that support pollinators. And our eighth graders have been researching groups of elements for the periodic table. One of the really interesting things about that research project from the eighth grade science students was that it was a real collaboration of the three teachers that we have teaching science. And it was a reach out. So the teachers sent out messages to our support staff, like our IEP case managers and the people that support students as paraprofessionals that said, hey, this project is coming up. The kids are getting excited. And there was a lot of collaboration among staff supporting students with, with that. We've had, just like the elementary schools, we've had a lot of students sign up for after school activities. We've had about 40 students sign up to work on the memory book, which is the middle school version of the yearbook. Students are out and about taking photographs of classes, of after-school sports. And we have a big group of kids that are signing up for student council that will start tomorrow. One of the hopes that I have for our student council is that they are able to help us start. We have some great systems that are going into lunch, but we also need to have some student advocates and student leaders. And so hopefully, our student council will start doing that. And then we have a great support system with our student support team that's been very busy. When students are not in school for 18 months, we do find that they have some challenges in relating with each other. And so our student support staff has been really busy doing some restorative conversations and making sure that students learn how to interact with each other through conflict. So it is, it is a time that we, we have set aside for October to do our fast testing. We do want to have fast testing in math and reading, but we want to get it done early next week so that we can start providing some of that very individualized support that students need. And Megan Schultz's reading intervention groups have already started as well. So we've got a lot going on.
It's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. You are hopping for sure.
Yeah. I usually get my 10,000 steps in, but it's a good, it's a good thing.
Before you leave, can you share with the board, just when you go into every classroom, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for learning targets or bulletin boards, things that I can ask kids about later. So if I see a student in the hallway or I see a student in the cafeteria after school, I usually start with what grade are you in? And then I ask them about something, you know, what are you doing after school? And then my third question is always, hey, I saw in science, you're working on the periodic table. Could you tell me about an element? I always want to kind of cap that relationship with something academic because that's why they are coming to school. And so I've also encouraged staff to do that as well.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you, Leah.
Any questions as she's walking away? All right.
Dr. Webb, Board Chair Diaz, School Board. Hi, I'm Chuck Ochaki, proud principal of the high school. And it's going to be really hard to limit to three things, right? And that's what we were told, three things. So three positives. Students are back. Enough said. Like it's been.
Mic drop.
Yes. Really. It's been fantastic. The energy in the building is just phenomenal. And I love having a friend in the building to help with middle school. The energy is awesome. My connections class is the best class ever. So if any of you are watching, you guys are fantastic. So just having students in the building, seeing them participate has bring, has brought back some sort of, we're moving closer to normal in our pandemic that we're living. The second thing, I would call it, and actually, a student said this to me on Friday. He called it the gauntlet of welcome. And someone else said, it's more like the gauntlet of joy. So for those of you that don't know, I stand by door number seven and I hand out masks and welcome every kid that come in, that comes into the building. And lately, staff members have been joining me. And so it is like a gauntlet of welcome. It's just fantastic to see the kids. In fact, I knew it must be a big deal when I wasn't there this morning and a kid asked me where I was. Like Monday didn't work feel right today because I wasn't at the gauntlet of joy. So if ever you're in the building, Dr. Webb saw it, he participated in it last week, right? The gauntlet of joy, just welcoming our kids back into the building. And then I'm really excited about next week. We start Packer Plus What I Need Wednesday. It starts next week. I am super pumped about this. I've been holding some meetings with parents and guardians and hearing all about their concerns. And it's, it's been really helpful. It's been really humbling. And it's been really helpful to hear what their concerns are about this. These meetings are just going to allow us to continue to strengthen the program that we've designed. And so I really appreciate the feedback. And I just want everyone to know, there's two more meetings that parents and guardians can attend tomorrow evening at 7:00 at the high school or Wednesday morning at 8:00 a.m. again at the high school. So trying to switch it up. The meeting that I just came out of with the parents was, it was really good. And we made some agreements of, of sharing data of what a success looks like for this program and surveying our families after a couple of weeks that we've been into the swing of it to see if it's actually fitting our needs. So I'm really excited about them coming out and being able to, to share with me their concerns. So any questions?
What are some of the biggest students' needs that you're finding as we're coming back in?
They've been out of school for 18 months? Like really? And I would actually say, we talked about this as a staff, I would say it's not only student-related, it's staff-related. When, just academic stamina? Like being able to go the whole 50 minutes or the whole day or whatever. Most people would tell you, like in the month of September, your legs are tired and you're, you know, when you get back into teaching, right? Your legs are tired or something like that. But we've all have just been exhausted because we've learned ways to save ourselves during the pandemic, right? It was really easy for me, if I was in a meeting, to mute myself, maybe go to my bit emoji, right? And calm myself down. And now we're live, right? So it's just getting back into that stamina of, of teaching and learning for our kids, I would say. That was, that's it. I mean, if you think about it, and it wasn't me who'd said this, right? So someone coined the phrase, it's educational. Man, great. It's brain fart right here.
Atrophy.
Atrophy. Thank you. Educational atrophy, right? Muscle memory has been gone because if you think about it, it was really two years ago that they were really in a building, getting into a system and structure. And we've just learned, like, we have to build those muscles back up in ourselves and in our students. So good question. Anything else? Because I think Robin O'Reilly would like to come up next.
Great. Thank you.
Well, hello. So thank you to Dr. Webb, Chair Diaz, and the rest of the school board for welcoming us all here tonight. For different highlights at the Community Learning Center, I'm Robin O'Reilly. So I'm the onsite administrator there. I'm an assistant principal for the district. So I just want to highlight a few of the different things. So as Chuck said, the kids are in the building. And so when we had to schedule out what we were going to do this year, we had to keep that in mind that some students were really used to doing a distance learning model. Some were able to do a credit recovery and acceleration during their day. Some were used to doing projects. And so we really tried to highlight what the students' needs were by having a variety of different courses offered during the day. So because of that, we've been able to offer a credit recovery and credit acceleration option for pretty much every hour. It's about four hours of the day, most days. And to date, we've already recovered 21 credits. So that was at the end of the day today of students that were able to do that and move on to the next course that they need. So I do want to highlight that. And it's been a learning curve on how we're reporting it and doing that, but it's a bad, or it's a good problem to have because we're making sure that we're, we're giving students what, what they need. And that's what we, we are here to do. Another highlight that I wanted to point out is, thank you for your support in the work experience and art in our building. It has just been a game changer for the students in our building to have, have those options. So we have one period of art for those students, hands-on art each day that we're able to go and tackle that state requirement to help with that. And then also, it just gives kids a creative outlet. And with that, our work experience teacher, it splits with that art. And that has just been awesome for the kids. We've had a different speaker from different careers every week. So, so far, we've had realtors, a general contractor, cosmetology, and our first branch of military is going to be presenting. And these are all people from the community that are volunteering their time to come in, work with our students, and they give resources on how to go the different pathways and then different resources in how to pay and salary information, training information. And then our kids are really getting excited for construct tomorrow. It's a huge, around the area where they have all different hands-on learning trades. And the students are able to go there, talk to different people about the training. It was going to be this week, but it got moved to December. So that is something huge. So the kids were buzzing about that, wanting to do that. So our work experience program is something we haven't had fully operational in a few years. So that's been a highlight this year. And the last, and I kind of blended, I had a three and a half one. But the last one is our space 2.0, like relaunching reopening. So we've had this beautiful space. We were able to come back and it was so different in COVID, having different students, different pods of students coming and going. So it's really been a great highlight this year to have that building running at capacity and able to use those facilities. So if you are able to see anything that's going on, we use that green space during lunch for football games, walk by and see, see the kids running, playing, just being kids. And then also, that space is used for our FIAD classes and our other courses that are going out there for science. So, and our students are working, there's a group of them trying to figure out a cost-effective way to up the curb appeal. So they're going to be planting all things that are native to Minnesota. So that's what, so look for that in the coming, coming weeks. You'll see some different plants trying to, trying to gussy up the, the front a little bit there. So that's where we're at. So any questions for me?
Could you give us one minute on the online school?
Sure. So what we did not know going into it is all the different layers of reporting, which might seem like, what, what does that mean or what does that do? So when we launched this trial period with a online program, what we have to figure out is what's considered a dual enrollment student? So if there's somebody from the high school that's, right now, the, a family has been waiting for two weeks deciding if they want to continue Spanish at the high school or, or not. And so that, that determines how we enroll them. Or different students with IEP needs, what services that they would need. So at this point, what we've realized is we can't fully enroll them until we have all the right enrollment pieces in place. So what I will say is our target was 25 students. We actually have 32 students now in the process. And I think 19 students was end of day Friday that are fully enrolled, working all of those pieces. So it, it's slower enrolling them than we had thought because we didn't know, that we figured out there's 22 steps for a non-IEP bearing student to enroll them, all the back and forth. So it takes a little bit more time, but it's, it's worth it. We have a thorough plan for them when they get enrolled.
Some of your students are taking their full course load online and some are taking half of their schedule online?
So the majority of students are taking their core classes. A lot of the seniors are just taking what's left for them to graduate. So although they might not be taking six full classes or six periods a day, they may only need four classes a day, and that's their full load to get to what they need for graduation. So as far as the dual enrollment students, those are, for the most part, for that, that family that might be looking at doing foreign language or IEP services, depending on their needs, if it's coming out of the CLC support or the high school support. So learning curve is, is high, but we're working through it. And I think we're able to benefit a lot of students that are looking for that option.
What is your capacity with that? How many can you serve?
We are learning that as we go to. So right now, well, we are starting it mimicking what we were using under our SAP program. We had an online, our state-approved alternative program. That's where our online academy used to live. So what we did was mimic that staffing model to support how we were going to launch our South St. Paul virtual this year, not knowing what the interest was going to be and, and how much resources that we could really put, put above. So after debating for a really long time, do we try to resource it and find the kids or do we have the kids and then resource it later? We kind of decided on a blend that we're going to start small and then keep reevaluating and grow as, as enrollment grows. So at this point in time, right now, just, just to catch up and see and get some real data to see if it's beneficial, if students are able to, to keep up with it, if, if it's going to be a viable option in the future. Before we say that's the best thing ever, everyone should do it or, you know, tone it back, we just want to keep having different data points along the way to make sure families know what they're getting into. And we have the support needed. If a student is fully online, they, they need to have that support outside of just their classroom teacher. And so making sure that they're not lost in the shuffle and making sure they're still tied to the South St. Paul School District.
Great.
And so you'll get as a board that enrollment update every month and how we're doing with our South St. Paul virtual.
Great. Thank you.
So when a student is in that like transitional stage of enrollment, are they already a South St. Paul enrolled student and it's just transitioning to that? Or are they sort of in limbo land from, how does that affect our enrollment numbers?
Well, we, we figured out, so at this point in time, as we're starting small, we're, we're using our South St. Paul students. And just doing that enrollment transitioning. And for the most part, they're students that either came from the CLC or from South St. Paul High School. So as far as the, the background of they've already had their student ID, they've already had a login. A lot of them have access to technology and have their own Chromebook assigned to them. So that removed any of those barriers. And so that's a quick shuffle. So even though on the enrollment side where it's between Chuck and I, as we're trying to figure out, is a student still on both rosters? Are they not? The student is able to jump in and start working because I'm able to program them through their software. So they're able to start working. So while they're in that no man's land, behind the scenes, they don't know it's us working through the dropping. They're working through their classes, they're getting that support from their teachers. And it's us cleaning up. The, the one thing that I will say is, in the event of an IEP, we want to make sure that their minutes are served. And so that would be the one, one caveat that we want to have that meeting and make sure that we are supporting that student before we would do a change of placement without an IEP team. So that would be the only one.
I have just one more quick question.
Yep.
Probably not quick. As you grow, is, is this online program something where, let's say, you're offering a course that somebody in West St. Paul would like to take? Would, would there be open enrollment for this online?
I, I believe the hope is that this is, one, to serve the families of our South St. Paul so that they're not looking elsewhere to go somewhere else. But as we grow and really fine tune and have a solid program, that we really can market and give students the experience that maybe don't live within our borders. And so absolutely, this would be an open enrollment. This would be a target for, for families.
Yeah.
We do, at this point in time, we did have to start small, where we are at 10 through 12. And all the calls right now are getting funneled through the front office at the CLC. And Nancy gets calls every day from, because we are in the directory now. And so students from all over are asking what our elementary options are, our middle school. And so we don't have great answers for them yet because we want to, once again, make sure that we're not opening it up and advertising a program that we don't know the good, bad, and ugly of yet. We want to make sure that we're going to offer a quality program.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
I have one last question, Robin. How are your neighbors adjusting to having a school there instead of an office building?
I hope very well. Ask Monica. I get to see Monica every day walking her dog.
I was thinking in terms of the, you know, the houses on either side, you know, one to the north and one to the east.
Well, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any, any complaints through the city or through the school district. But yes, our students, they're, they're relatively, get there right at school start and they leave the, the property right away. And so our school day ends at 2:25 for the majority of students. And Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we do have options up until 4:00 that will stay there. But hard pressed to find students either loitering or hanging out or anything else as any school building would be. But no, I have not heard any pushback from any of the neighbors that I think there was some anxiety going into this project that there might be. But nope, we use, we use the park as we go over there. We use the green space. And our, our students are very respectful and I think we've been really well received by the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I was just excited to have a school, a school there because, yeah, they come in, they, I love seeing them on the green space and we walk by and wave and I stop and sometimes chat with the students. And yeah, and at the end of the day, they're gone. So they're, they're great neighbors and I'd much rather have them as neighbors than many other types of businesses that could have chosen to go into that space. So it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for staying up longer.
Thank you.
Bearing our questions. Thank you, leaders. We really appreciate your updates. We appreciate your enthusiasm and for, for being excited to have kids in the building. Parents are excited to send their kids to the building.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, everyone.
Great. There are no listening session submissions this week. And then up next is Dr. Webb to give us some highlights. Hi.
All right. Well, that, that's hard to beat.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, that's where all the excitement is with the kids, with our staff, seeing them, seeing kids roll off the buses, being greeted by our clerical staff and our lunchroom staff and, uh, getting into classrooms and, uh, that's the best part. So, uh, here's a, a brief update from other great pieces of information from around the district. So, uh, we actually did have one person say, hey, uh, could I submit this information to the board? So we grabbed that to put it here because it was an announcement that we've been promoting for the last couple of weeks about a wonderful mental health-focused event. So it's called Let's Talk About It. It's a suicide prevention and awareness night. It's going to be held at our high school, October 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the secondary. So there's a free dinner at the start. There'll be a program that begins about 6:30 in our auditorium and we want to give them a special shout out and invite our community into this really important event. We have to keep talking about mental health and wellness and wellbeing for kids and for families and giving families and kids resources in our community. So October 7th is that evening. And, and maybe just one more plug.
Dave, can you see the slides?
Oh, thank you. I better, uh, let me go back so, so you can actually see the slides. Thanks for some good coaching from our Director of Learning.
No, we were focused on Dave's.
It's hard to get that learning targeted without the slides, right? So, thanks, Chad. You can see who, who's got my back.
So here's the slide again, October 7th, 5:00 to 8:00.
Um, and just, just a reminder, uh, we have two counselors at every school in our district. We have, uh, mental health support in addition to those two counselors through a collaborative grant with Dakota County on a sliding scale. So if we have more need for mental health services to support families, we increase the number of mental health counselors at the site based on the student need. So just a reminder for families, we want to keep, uh, reducing the stigma about mental health, uh, and provide support for all of our students and families, so. Our educational benefit applications, uh, we've rolled out a number of really good communications. Uh, we have a number of families that have signed up. There's also, uh, we know a deadline that's coming up. We have temporary eligibility that will expire October 21st. So if you're a family that hasn't completed the forms, we want you to get online, complete the forms and become eligible. And it's not just eligible for free meals because we already have free meals. It's for the full range of educational benefits, uh, and what we saw this year with some, with some great ties to P E T and the like. So we want to encourage all eligible families to submit. We have a number of district highlights. We have launched our career and college readiness pathways. Uh, you know that we have a flagship IB diploma program and just as important, we have career pathways for our students as well. So we have them in healthcare and in business and entrepreneurship and transportation and education. So, uh, here's our tri-district business and entrepreneurship class, working with exporting goods and launching kind of their support. So you'd be surprised at the number of businesses that have reached out to us. Four years ago, we changed the question for career pathways. We would always ask businesses prior to that time, what can you do for us? We've turned it around to say, what can we do for you? We're engaging triple the number of businesses and it's been a win-win for our students and their career pathways. High school activity fair. It's great to be able to just lay out not only the activities, but to have the students selling why they should join a club or activity. I can tell a student they should join, uh, SAD or theater, but the real kid, the kids listen to their peers way more than they listen to the adults when it comes to joining in. So that went on. Uh, we want to give them a shout out. Last week was the South St. Paul Education, Educational Foundation Walkathon. So we had our 5K walk run and students were able to get sponsors for walking the 5K. I know there were a couple of elementary students that earned over a thousand dollars in pledges.
Oh wow.
And so that money comes right back to classrooms and kids' classrooms in our school. So thanks to all the community members that maybe sponsored five dollars for 5K, uh, just hats off to our community. We had a walking school bus event. Uh, this was down near Capoja, just making sure that we're always identifying safe routes to school. You can see a lot of new shiny orange vests, uh, orange flags. Uh, our Safe Routes Coordinator is fully grant-funded, is part-time, was able to continue to get grants. We've had donation for equipment, but also bicycles that we now have essentially a classroom set of regular bicycles and adaptive, uh, for special needs students as well. So lots of good things there. Here's our Pollinator Garden, our seventh grade science project in partnership with our Dakota County and Ship Grant team. We have our fiction and nonfiction at Lincoln Center, our first graders learning the difference between the two. And as always, we have our upcoming calendar events. The most notable is Homecoming Week, October 4th through the 8th. We have No School on the 15th and MEA the 21st and 22nd. And we'll go back to you.
Great. Well, that's me. All right. Well, thank you so much, uh, for letting us know what was happening, I mean, around the district. Um, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include the financial claims, bills payable, and staffing as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? And then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. Motion carries. And then moving on to the policy section of our agenda, uh, we have one policy that's on our agenda for approval tonight. Uh, we'll be approving this policy under the emergency clause. And so typically policies have three readings before they're approved, but we're asking for this policy to be approved on the first reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. And a second?
Second.
Great. Thanks, John. Um, Dr. Webb or a policy representative, uh, would you please share some background about that, the, the policy that you'd like us to?
Would you like to lead her?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so we needed to do a little bit of a review of emergency closing of schools. Um, one is winter is coming. We all chuckled about that in our earlier meeting. Uh, but some of our facility usage has changed a little bit as time has come on and we need to be able to appropriately plan for and communicate with the families how a closing is going to function. Um, so we need to clean up some language that matched what our district operation actually looks like on the ground right now. So, um, that is our reason and request for, um, needing to put this into action so soon.
Great.
Yeah. So we, we spell out in the policy exactly how things play out for our staff when we call, uh, Flex Learning Day, which is our term for a school closing day. So when, uh, the students will lament the fact that, uh, you know, they used to be able to just go sledding, uh, sometimes on a snow day. Now with, uh, technology, that might not always be the case. So, um, but just long story short, we have our policy tonight for approval.
Great. They can still go sledding at lunchtime.
They sure can.
Mm-hmm. All right. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And we do have, uh, three business items before us tonight. Uh, the first item is the approval of the Acceptance of Gifts Resolution. To have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Nikki, a second?
Second.
Thanks. Uh, Lisa, will you read the resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the School Board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background. Donation amount of $425 from, to the theater program. It was donated by the South St. Paul Lions and the purpose of that donation is to purchase some tools. We also had a $2,000 donation donated to South St. Paul Secondary from the Kopp Family Foundation and that is part of their Random Acts of Kindness Program.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. Um, any discussion with the board? And thank you for those generous gifts. Um, Lisa, will you please call a roll?
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Motion carries. Thanks. Uh, the second business item that we have tonight is for the approval to sign onto the Joint Powers Agreement with the West Metro School District's Network Collaboration. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thanks.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Paul Breschier, our Technology Director, do you have any background information or Dr. Webb?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Um, thank you for, for the vote. And, um, this, uh, Joint Powers Agreement, what it enables us to do is to continue and resume collecting equity aid around telecommunications. This is, um, something we've done for years. Um, and it is, uh, the, the Joint Powers Agreement also, um, has provisions for, for doing joint buys and things like that, collaboratively purchasing and exploring options. But, uh, the primary driver here is, uh, being able to unlock equity aid that we're entitled to, but we need to belong to a telecommunications consortium like this to be able to collect it each year. So the net effect of this immediately is, is to essentially unlock, um, I think last year it would have been $13,000 annually to, uh, offset some of our telecommunications costs. That's both around tele, telecom systems and, uh, and also our systems for data teleportation, uh, teleportation, data transfer. Our fiber optic and our internet services. We're not teleporting yet.
Any questions?
Let me know when we're paying for teleporting. Because that would be really exciting.
It's going to solve all our transportation issues.
Right? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Paul. And then our last business item for tonight is, uh, the School Board is being asked to approve certifying the 2021 payable 2022 proposed property tax levy to the maximum and declare Monday, December 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers as the official public hearing to certify the 2021 payable 2022 final property tax levy. That was a mouthful. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thanks. Uh, Dr. Webb, will you please explain the proposed levy that's before us?
Yeah, I sure will. Hopefully you can see this PowerPoint. Uh, we are just, uh, pleased tonight to be able to share with you just our proposed property tax levy for this fall. Uh, we always know it's, uh, the official, uh, certification comes in December at our, and Truth and Taxation Board Meeting, but tonight is, uh, the preliminary move. So, uh, we've been working with MDE and MDE and the state systems have been updating kind of levy information, uh, for the past many weeks and they're, continue to do so, uh, which is why tonight we will be kind of recommending approval for the levy to the maximum to allow the state dust to settle. And then, uh, we will come in in December and, uh, give you the actual levy amount, final number for our community. But we, we're close and we know approximately what that is tonight. So, uh, tonight, uh, again, it's on the slide here, talks about our proposed approval by the board, that's tonight, and then we'll submit in the next day or two to MDE and Dakota County, uh, all of our information that we approved tonight. What that sets in motion then is the, uh, proposed property tax statements that get mailed to all of our residents with the information that we approved tonight. In December, as I mentioned, December 13th, our board will approve the final levy and we're going to give you a preview of that tonight too. So, as I mentioned, our proposed levy will approve tonight to the maximum and then, uh, we will, uh, adjust as needed, but I don't believe that many of the adjustments will be significant moving forward. Uh, as we look at, uh, the levy change, uh, the bottom right is the percentage number that we always look at, the 1.6 number is, uh, what's the change from last year and why would that change be 1.6 is the conversation that I want to have with the community tonight. So, uh, you can see it went from the 11 million and some change to 11,200 and some change. So the why behind that, uh, came out of COVID last year and, uh, the unemployment benefits that we had to make sure that our workers received and that was actually picked up by the state of Minnesota and paid last year for unemployment. But those charges are turned back to school districts in the form of the levy and that is causing the increase, the 1.2% increase in our levy as the state seeks to recoup their expenses. So that's majority of the fund. There are other, uh, prior year adjustments as well, but a much smaller 0.4 point. And that total is about 1.6%. So again, our next steps tonight, we are proposing, you approve the levy as a board. We'll then propose the levy, take the proposed levy that you approve tonight, submit it to MDE and our county. So we start rolling then in mid-November with all of our proposed property tax statements to our residents. Uh, December 13th is then we prove the final tax levy and we basically certify that on the 13th. So that's it and we'll go back to you.
All right. Board members, do you have any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. So that's it for our business items tonight and we'll move on to reports and informational items from our board members. Um, and we'll start with Bill.
Um, I have nothing tonight, Chair. Thank you.
Monica.
I also don't have anything tonight.
Great. Nikki?
I have nothing tonight.
John?
Um, I just want to give a shout out to everyone who participated in the 5K. Um, it was great to see, um, so much turnout to support our schools and want to wish everyone well with the upcoming homecoming week.
Oh, yeah. Last but not least, Wendy.
Yep. Kind of the same thing, repeating what John just said. Thank everyone for their participation and their support for the Foundation Walkathon last week. It's always a fun event for the kids, brings the community together. And thank you to Carrie and Sharon at the Foundation Office for coordinating it all. It was always, always a nice event. And I am personally looking forward to Homecoming Week coming up next week. The football game will be that Friday night at seven o'clock at the, the high school. So we look forward to that and everyone can come out and support our, our Packers, all, all the different events throughout the whole week, support our athletic teams, our activities. It's a great time to show community support.
Wendy, who do we play against?
Bloomington Jefferson.
Oh, Bill's with the same.
Yeah, it should be, should be interesting. That'd be a, a new game. And then also, um, one last thing that I want to kind of invite and to let people know, coming up on October 13th, that Wednesday, up at the secondary building, there's going to be a, a congratulations ceremony for, for David Metzen, a former teacher in our district, principal in our district, superintendent in our district. He is being honored and being named the David Metzen Scholarship Hall, which is the high school building cafeteria will be, now be the scholarship hall. So we're looking forward to giving that recognition to Dr. Metzen. Be at 6:30 PM in the secondary building. So we encourage people and invite them to come out and congratulate Dave Metzen for all that he's done for our community, for our school district. And he's very active also in the Educational Foundation. So we look forward to, to that event coming up in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And that's actually all that we have for tonight.